Can you see the packet or thumbs up? Okay.
Hi, everyone. Before the meeting starts, this is Nancy Dash with Herald Journal. I'm taking Ivan's place tonight.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Have a great meeting.
Yeah, thank you. All right, we have 5:30, so let's call the meeting to order. And if we can, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Spain. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Perfect, thank you. And then I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion. Second.
We have a motion, we have a motion of second. We'll go, approved by roll call again. Boder. Stephen McPadden.
Aye.
McNeely.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Then Dodge is an aye, motion carries five zero. That will take us to the, to four A one, the 2021 Street Improvement Project.
Okay, Mayor and Council, I can do a brief introduction and then, if Dave wants anything, he can as well. So, um, as you know, in, we've been planning on the 2021 Street Improvement Project that consists of reconstructing Third Street and Fifth Street from Blue Jay Avenue to approximately one, or 200 feet east of Ridge Road. This would include some water main improvements sewer, our sanitary sewer, some curb and gutter, and of course, the street reconstruction. So, as you know, the project is about 1.5 million, a little over, and the city's portion is about, projected per policy to be about 957,000, with the assessed portion being about 609,000. So, the November 23rd workshop meeting, the information was presented. There was just, oh, sorry, I'm managing people coming in too, so I apologize if I have a pause. So, with that, we did look at some of the properties per assessment. On December 14th, we went through it a little bit more in depth. And at that meeting, the council requested additional information from our last reconstruction project that was done in 2007. Um, that included like the average assessment for properties in 2007, which was 11,864 for street water and sewer. And then which properties had already been assessed with that project. So there were a few on the corner lots on Fifth Street. They were assessed about 4,606 with the 2007 project, and then the corner properties on trunk highway 25 were assessed 8,700, and I can pull that up in a second. And then we do have the feasibility report attached as well for more information. So, um, right now, the, this is a timeline, a tentative timeline. So today, we're trying to get final direction from the city council on assessments for the project. So we need to know what we will be presenting at the improvement hearing. So this is just kind of the beginning stage, just educating residents on that, the project, and then inviting them to the improvement hearing and just having a discussion. So, it is not the final assessment that I'll go through, but it's just kind of the, the starting point. So Dave, with that, did you want to add any more? Any more to that?
I guess, no, just to kind of, you know, follow up on what you're saying here. What we're looking for, just the direction so that we can finalize the report presented to the council and get the, the improvement hearing scheduled. You know, I, I think from a process standpoint, you can kind of view this like you do when you set your preliminary, preliminary levy for the taxes, you know, it's kind of setting what you think is the worst case scenario. We can always kind of back off where we're at from a a number standpoint, what you're proposing to assess, once you hear feedback from the affected residents. But we kind of have to get something established so that we finish the report and present it. The, the way it's been laid out, I think we've gone over this a few times now, but you know, the scope of the project, I think is pretty straightforward with probably the exception of the curb and gutter on Fifth Street, the north side of Fifth Street, you know, the drainage works as it is with with curb and gutter, but that, that is one question, I guess, just from a finalizing the number standpoint is to whether or not we were to, to include curb and gutter or not. Other than that, I guess, just be happy to answer questions or join in the discussion and hopefully we can get some final direction tonight.
Perfect. Thank you, Dave. Any questions for the city attorney or the administrator? And Dave, I kind of agree to your comments here that we approach this similar to our preliminary budget. I, I would like to see us add in the curb and gutter on Fifth Street and use our initial preliminary assessment numbers per our policy. And then, like you say, as we get down the road and have our open houses and our meetings, I think it can always get lowered. But at least that'll give you numbers to start with. We know they'll only come down if need be. Other thoughts?
Are you saying to include the curb and gutter on the Mayor Lutheran side?
Yeah, I, I think we, I think we should. We can always eliminate it later, but that'll at least let them tie off the feasibility and get the report to this, to the city and then go from there. We can always change our mind down the road.
Yeah, then I'm, I'm on board. I just feel that we, I would like to look at the different options because I think that the, our assessment policy are, is a little high for these homeowners, especially since they've already paid for some. So if we're able to start somewhere and lower it once we get further down in the project, but just get it moving, knowing that we will be getting it done next year, then I'm okay with where we're at.
Yeah, that was kind of my thoughts to Nikki and, you know, there's always that chance, you know, it's, let's be real, I doubt it, but there's always that chance, no one will question the numbers and everyone will be fine with them too. And per our policy, and then we just go with those numbers. We haven't been asked yet to lower anything. Or, or reassess, reassess it based on past projects.
So if you complete it with the worst case scenario for the, for the homeowners, then the council comes back and they want to look at some options, what's that going to look like? Or will your report already have those options built into it?
I, I guess what I would propose is to leave those off to the side, you know, you have it up on the screen right now, you know, some of the different scenarios we've looked at as to how you could approach this if you were to consider making adjustments to your policy. I would leave that to the side right now. One of the things that isn't shown in that schedule is whether or not in between you accepting the report, ordering the improvement hearing, before the improvement hearing, whether or not we want to try to do some sort of a, an open house style meeting to allow people to kind of absorb it in a more informal setting, have us available to answer questions and and get a sense of kind of where people are at and I, I guess, just give us a chance to, to know what kind of, I, I guess, a first look at what kind of feedback we might be getting before we get to the improvement hearing. I think the way it's laid out right now, I would anticipate that there may be some of the, the property owners that may be concerned about the, the assessment amounts. Like Mayor Dodge said, we don't know that till we hear from them, but I think as is on your screen, we have, we have some different ways that we can look at that depending on the feedback we get, but for right now, I just leave that to the side.
I agree. I think we need to have something before the hearing as, you know, that it's, they can have time to review it and bring forward their thoughts.
Agreed.
All right, any other questions? With that, then I'll look for a motion to have Bolton and Menke close out the feasibility study and, and submit a report to the city utilizing the policy assessments and full construction on the project.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion of second. Any further discussion?
Mayor Dodge, just then, just so I make sure I understand correctly, that based on that motion, then what we would prepare, or, or, yeah, I guess, prepare for would be, we would submit the, the feasibility report basically in the format that you have already seen it with the addition of the curb and gutter on the north side of Fifth Street. And then we would obviously adjust the numbers accordingly based on that addition.
Yes, that is correct.
And then what I would propose to do would be when we, when you, when you ordered the improvement or accept the report, order the improvement hearing, at that time, we can talk about the potential ideas for an open house style meeting.
Yep, agreed. And Councilmember McNeely and Butterfield, was that also your intent on your motion of second?
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you. All right, any further discussion? All right, with that, Boder.
Aye.
Stephen McPadden.
Aye.
McNeely.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
And Dodge is an aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. You have a good evening.
Yep, you too. Thank you. All right, Maggie, that's going to take us to B one. And just real quick, before we get started on it, just a couple items I want to talk about first, before you start presenting. Just reiterating, you know, this isn't a work session, it's not a public hearing, so I, I think we're here now, council's got their information, it's time to start making our decisions and getting through these and getting this done. So with that, I hope we can move along smoothly. My intent is going to be, just because there's so many alternates, my intent will be to make a first motion to award the bid. And then we'll go down alternate one by, we'll take each alternate one at a time, discuss them and vote on them individually. I think then we'll go by priority of the, that the fire committee has, has presented to us. And that way, I think it'll eliminate some of the, you know, we could be here for hours making 500 different motions with different alternates and such. So I think that's a smoother way to do it. So we'll see how it goes. We'll readjust if need be as we, as we get into it. What else? I think that's everything I wanted to touch base on. First of all, one other thing that might be helpful for Janelle for this one, because we need to get this right, make sure the minutes are completely accurate. When you make a motion or a second, could you please also say your last name, just so Janelle can appropriately document it? I think that'll be helpful for her. So with that, Maggie, I'll let you jump into four B one, the fire station bids.
Yeah, um, I don't think I need to go into a whole lot of the, a lot of the information. We already know a lot of, we've already gone over a lot of the information and it's in the packet for everybody to read. Just, we had 19 bids that included seven alternates. The fire department had, or the fire station committee provided us on December 7th. Or they provided on December 7th, the alternate priorities. And then since the last meeting, they did provide an updated version of their alternates and kind of an explanation as to why. That's also in your packet. And I'll go into more detail in a little bit. I'm going to use Nikki's spreadsheet that she provided and we'll kind of use that, that information is in there as well. So, and then at the last meeting, we did kind of go over financials and a timeline. Next step is tonight, we need to discuss approving the, proving the project, the base bid and then any alternates. And then we need to move forward with drafting a contract that would be presented at the December 28th meeting and then also start working on financing information. So at the last meeting, there was a request for more information that was on in-floor heating and then sealed concrete versus epoxy flooring. So based, some of the information that we received about the in-floor heat.
Maggie, can I jump in quick? Why don't we, you can talk about those as we get to each of them, I think makes, seems to be appropriate.
Oh, sure.
When we, when, when we get to each of those alternates, why don't you give us the background and the additional information at that point? And just to be clear, we, we also need to approve the FFE line item, is that correct, for bonding purposes?
We do, yeah. So we're approving, I'll bring up the spreadsheet right now. Can you see the spreadsheet now, or do I need to?
No, we can't right now, but we can't right now.
All right, how about now?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
So this just, I just added a few things, just priorities in order of the alternates and then, yes, so everything on this spreadsheet is what we need to look at because, and consider for approval because this is going to be what we need to know for our final number that we're going to be financing. So again, base bid, that's the.
So what, so how many of those, when we approve the base bid, just automatically are part of it? Architect can, I mean, some of those are wrapped into the, once we approve the base construction bid, correct?
Um, not necessarily. I mean, we've already approved the architect. Can, we, we already approved, so some of this that we have already approved. So really, it would be, yeah, when you do the base bid, the, the building permit fee is already going to be kind of approved with that. That's something we have to do. Special inspection testing is, is kind of something also that's mandatory. Contingencies is something we agreed upon before at 3%. So that 3% is when you approve the base bid will be the, about that 80,000 mark. It's just the FFNE. Maybe you could do a separate motion with, and I can pull up the, this sheet that breaks that down, if you want to discuss that further.
Line item six, six through 12, we need to approve the base bid and FFNE, is that what you're saying?
I would say, yes, you need to do the base bid. We've already done architect and we have already been aware of contingencies, everything else. So, yeah, base bid FFNE is, is what, would, would make sense.
All right, thank you. All right, you, do you want to talk a little about the basis or is there no need to? Have we, have you given enough background on that?
Um, I can go back to, one second.
And that's, that's fine. You can leave that up. We just do have an obligation, as May, you know, we talked before, we had 19 bids. We do have an obligation to accept the lowest responsible bid. And Maggie, we've talked about the responsibility, or how responsible BCI construction is and, and per all references and information from our architect, we feel they are certainly a responsible bidder, correct?
Correct.
All right. So with that, I'll look for a motion to accept the bid from BCI Construction on the amount of $2,675,069.
Stevie McPadden, I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Nikki McNeely, I second it.
We have a motion of second. Any further discussion? Any questions, any discussion? All right, hearing none. We'll go to a vote. Boder.
Aye.
Stephen McPadden.
Aye.
McNeely.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Dodge is an aye. Motion carries five zero. All right, that takes care of that. Then should we start with FFE, Maggie? Is that, is that what you have up next?
Yeah, I can, let me just pull up that. I want to share my packet again. So this is our current FFNE. I do have, this was provided by the fired department. I do have some additional quotes that we received this evening that I'll show in just a second. It's a, it's a different ice maker that is around 2.2,800. Um, additional information. Oh, sorry, somebody's commenting. Um, yeah, I think that's the only FFNE. Oh, and then the exhaust filtration the direct exhaust filtration system. Somebody had asked me what the, the, going with a in-building system that falls down from the roof. It's like an actual ventilation system. So we did get an idea of what that cost too, and that was 68,000. So these are just different systems and one, it would be actually part of the building structure or put into the building. This one is, that's being proposed for 69,000 is actually filters that are placed on each engine. And so that I can, hold on, I can bring up the direct information on that, but it just, I don't know if Andy wants to provide a little bit more detail on the difference, but one, again, would be in the building, would attach to the exhaust system of each truck and then get detached when the trucks leave. One is already built into the, or would be attached to the truck and would stay on the truck and essentially filter out the exhaust at all times.
Maggie, can you remember, we had approved a certain amount for FFNE. Can, is, does this, all this stuff fall within that? I cannot remember because too many numbers.
Um, yeah, I, I can't remember what our original FFNE was. I think it was quite a bit higher than this. But I think there was some discussion with the fire station committee and the fire department on reducing some items to get this number down and that they would purchase specific items with grant funds or with, in the future. So that's how they knocked it down quite a bit. Um, I do not recall what the original.
Isn't a number that council kind of had an idea as to how much?
Um, I don't know if council ever had like a specific number.
Five, 225 was like the number that's coming to my head.
Yeah, and 250 coming to my head too.
25,000?
No, 225,000. It's kind of what I recall. And then I thought we, we, they discussed. Now, I have a question. Now, some of these things could change when we actually purchase besides the couple quotes we got. Is it better to do up to amount, like FFNE up to a certain amount? So then there's a little bit of ability if some of those things change? Like, how do you make a motion? Or do you, it's like the exact this and that?
I, I, I think at this point, I think these are accurate numbers outside of the ice maker is off. And now we have a little updated number on the exhaust system, which has reduced a little bit. But these numbers should be accurate.
Yeah, I mean, if you.
Chief, Chief Mattso, can you talk a little bit about the ice maker and the need for an ice? And what's your annual ice budget? I mean, do you use ice a lot?
So, what, what it gets used for, so first of all, during our fish fries, during the, oh, the mayor city celebration, when we do our hamburger stand and stuff like that, we use a lot of ice during those events. Other, others areas that we use it, when we have trainings and stuff during the summer, a lot of times we'll, you know, fill a cooler up with some ice and water and stuff like that to bring out there. You know, so we can keep everybody hydrated and stuff like that. So then it gets used then as well.
Okay, oh, good. Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
What's, what's the deal with some of them being blank? Does that mean that item's not going to be purchased?
I thought some stuff was coming from the other station.
Andy, you're on mute.
That was on the original FFNE list, kind of all those items. And those were some of the items that we had cut out that either A, we decide against getting, or we were going to use from, you know, other, either, you know, what we had in the station, or we're going to use different, you know, separate funding to purchase those items, whether it be from our relief association or money we have been donated to from organizations.
So that includes the gear dryer, then? We're going to find alternate resources for that?
So we do have a gear dryer. You know, we were at first thinking about, you know, to get a second one, but then we just pulled the second one off, is what we did.
And do you actually have a quote for the projector and screen speaker surround system?
Uh, yes, we spoke with, oh, an agency or a consultant. And the committee met with him. um, and, uh, the committee met with him. He, you know, we went over what our needs were and stuff like that. And he had a, uh, a budget number for us and what, um, what would be needed for all that stuff. And that's where that.
I know the equipment that we got for city hall, um, did not come up to that amount. And so I was just wondering if, would it be easier and make more sense to have the same people who provided the, the equipment for city hall to also install and maintain the equipment for the fire station? And maybe they can cut us a deal because we're already a customer with them?
Um, I can actually answer that. Um, so what this would do, this bears will actually, because of the dollar mount, go out for bid and Tierney will, um, bid on that. So, um, so that dollar amount will be put into similar to the fire station, a bid document, and we're gonna have, um, companies like Tierney bid on it, and then it'll come back to council for the, uh, lowest. Whoever is the lowest responsible bid will be asked. Our council will consider approval for that.
So then, like Nikki said, would it make more sense if we, um, approve a budget for like an up to amount?
Yeah, you can definitely, um, go up to just in case there's anything. Uh, we also do have a contingency section two that's eighty thousand, um, where anything. But yeah, I, yes, you can do that. Um, if we do, for whatever reason, have any up overages or anything under, so.
Yeah, we can certainly go either way. I'm open to either if we do the hundred and fifty-five ninety-one forty-eight, which, uh, you know, we already know some of them are high, or if we wanna do a not to exceed, I'm, I'm fine with that, too. Uh, if anyone would like to make a motion.
So I have, I have two questions here. Um, one of them, I want you to kind of refresh on this exhaust system and the difference between what's planned now and what this is. And then also, um, is it possible to put the epoxy floor in this line item, the whole floor, like? I know that there's not an exact, 'cause we haven't voted on the rest of them yet, but I'm just wondering if that's a possibility.
What's the benefit of putting epoxy floor into FFNE?
Because she said they have.
Um, yeah, no, you, it doesn't really make any difference if you put it in there or approve it separately.
Yeah, I'm just wondering because, I don't know, I just, I'm trying to figure out the, this whole epoxy floor thing. We never even got a, this never was in the plan at, in the first place, so just trying to find a spot for it, I guess, if, if at all.
Yeah, it, it's something that you guys can discuss separately and, and, and approve.
And go from, okay.
Yeah, uh, approve separately.
Sure.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we set a not to exceed figure of one hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-eight cents for, um, FFNE.
Do we have a motion from voter? Do we have a second?
Nikki McNeely will second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? My only comment, um, to this Maggie, uh, is, and, and council, it seems to me that the direct exhaust filtration system, the six nine thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars and forty-eight cents should be in, I think it's in the wrong, I feel it's in the wrong bucket. I, to me, that's part of the building. Although I understand it's going now on each individual truck, but it seems to be part of the building cost to me. It's an exhaust system. Be it on the truck, be it, uh, lines hooked up that, you know, connect up, you know, whichever system we would've went with. Just seems it's in the wrong bucket from a, uh, uh, from that standpoint, but the number's still captured either way, but from a transparency, I, I just feel it's wrong, it's in the wrong spot.
I could look at it as a fixture.
That's all I have. Yeah, it's, I mean, but it's, yeah, and again, I don't wanna get into a discussion. I don't, I'm fine with it, just seems wrong. It just seems it's in the wrong place to me, but.
So, so does the motion need to include that, eh, the hundred and fifty thousand, five ninety-one has to be spent on these items? Like, we can't take that and say, oh, you know what, we're getting rid of this forty thousand dollar item, and we're gonna buy something else with it? Just wondering.
Eric, Eric, you made the motion, how, what, um?
Are you on mute, Eric?
I'm fine with the items on their list and, uh, they know that what the budget is for them to, you know, to purchase those and I think that we'd kick it back that way and let them, um, decide what they need out of that list. They should be able to be able to purchase everything on that list right now.
And, uh, Nikki, did you second the motion?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Was it, it was, so is your intent to not exceed the hundred and fifty thousand? I don't know, a hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-eight cents with the items that were listed, uh, that are presented to us, correct?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, Ty for that.
Um, I just have a question.
What, what?
Oh. Sorry.
Go ahead.
So are you, um, are you talking about the items that have costs next to them or the items that don't as well?
I'm understanding it to mean whatever items on that list that you can get for a hundred and fifty-five. If you get something cheaper and you add something else on the list, then you add it. That's what I thought Eric meant. I don't know, Eric.
I just wanted a clarification, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's fine with me. You know, if they can, you know, get a bargain on some of the other items and not go over that amount, I'm fine with that.
Yep. I agree.
Okay.
That's same for me.
Perfect, thank you. Um, Andy, just real quick on, on these, the filtration system, once we attach them to vehicles, as we trade vehicles, do we have to buy new ones or can they be removed off and then put on, on other ones? How does that work?
Um, so, uh, it depends on, they can be removed and put on different vehicles. Um, the, the issue being, um, I don't know if I explained to you a little bit, but it depends on the year of the truck, um, on what system it needs. Um, older trucks need a certain type of a system, a newer truck needs a different type of system. So if we were to get rid of kind of a, an older truck, um, that system may not necessarily work on that newer truck from the way I kinda understood it. Um, but they can be transferred from truck. There is, you know, the cost of, of switching it over. I don't know if there's parts of it that could be used, you know, onto a newer truck and not, I guess I'd have to ask that question. Um, but I do know that, yeah, you can take it off, put on a, a different truck. I know with the other system, um, you know, when you would get a new truck, there is certain stuff you need to, um, you know, adapt for that, you know, certain truck as well, um, you know, to make it all work, um, so.
Okay, thank you. So it could be some additional costs as new trucks come in, another eight to ten thousand for this system?
Yes, possibly.
Are there a lot of companies providing that? I mean, would, would we be able to get second, second quotes on this and maybe come in a little cheaper? Or is this, uh, one of these specialized items that very few manufacture?
As, as far as I know, very few others, or if any manufacture it, I would have to research it, uh, more to see if there's any other ones that do.
So do we, do we feel there's a risk if in five years from now, this company goes out of business now? And we can't get replacements, and now we don't have an exhaust system or one that we have to now put in-house? Do, do you feel there's a risk there?
I would say that is potential with anything you buy, um, you know, of, you know, uh, you know, even if the other system, you know, we had purchased that, uh, that company goes out and somebody else may build something like that, but it doesn't, you know, it doesn't interchange. Uh, so that's risk is always there with anything, I believe. Um, do I feel that that's gonna be, you know, a, a risk? I, I guess I don't, but there's always that possibility.
Okay, thank you. Alright, any other questions? Alright, we have a motion, a second, to approve any items on the FFE list that was presented, not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-eight cents. Uh, we have a motion, a second with that, we'll vote. Voter.
Aye.
Steven McPadden.
Aye.
McNeely.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
And Dodge is an aye. Motion carries five zero. Alright, Maggie, I think then we can move on to the, uh, alternate one, the priority, uh, one, which is alternate one of the additional apparatus bays.
Yeah.
A hundred and sixty-five thousand, sixty-nine dollars.
Yep, so that would be the addition of two extra bays, um, to the east of the building, um. Not sure how much detail you wanna go into that. I know the, I guess it's pretty self-explanatory, just, just that addition, um. Let's see, who, yeah, east end of the building, so.
Any questions, any clarification? Um, we've discussed this quite a bit in, in work sessions. Alright, hearing none, then I'll look for a motion to approve priority one, alternate one, the additional apparatus bays for a hundred and sixty-five thousand, sixty-nine dollars.
I'll make that motion. This is Butterfield.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Nikki McPadden, I'll second it.
Nikki McPadden's a second, any further discussion? And then I know this has been one, um, hotly discussed and contested, and, um, for me, I don't see the need for the additional, um, bays right now. I feel we, um, have met all the needs. We've checked all the boxes. We've taken care of safety. We're, you know, as, without any alternates, we're sitting at three point three million, three point three million, five hundred and, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, excuse me, um, which I, I think that's about the top, um, where we should be on this. Um, I know council at one point approved, uh, you know, a, 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 um, base construction cost of two point eight million. This will certainly put us over the two point eight million. I was, although at past, I was opposed to the two point eight, I wanted to be more around two point five. Um, if possible, I'm trying to keep this entire project around three million. Um, we've already exceeded it. I just, uh, we have nothing on our CIP, um, that, that we need any additional apparatus. Uh, I just don't see a need for it right now. I think down the road, if it's needed, when we have three, four, five hundred more homes, it can help pay it. I think that's the time to do it. Um, this has, doesn't have anything, you know, at that point, it wouldn't be a bond, it would just be paying cash for it. Um, for the, you know, even if it's up to three hundred thousand, so for those reasons, um, I just think we've met the needs and, and the building is, it, it, no matter what, even if we did nothing more, this is a really nice building. I mean, we put a lot into it, a lot of time and effort by the committee. Um, this is a great improvement and gets us where we need to be, um. So with that, I, I just don't see the need for it. I, I also feel in the next ten, fifteen years, um, things are gonna change a lot on how these, um, rural fi- uh, volunteer fire departments are set up from having to merge some and, and getting members and, and we have a generation of all about me and less people are volunteering time and they get more busy, and I think we're gonna be merging. I think we're gonna see a building between here and New Germany in ten or fifteen years, or here between Watertown, and I, I just don't think, um, we should be spending that right now. So just my thoughts. Anyone else, any other discussion?
I, I, excuse me, that thought had also crossed my mind, but then it, it also occurred to me that one of the reasons we're in the predicament we are now is because when the original fire department was built, we built it to meet those needs and not to consider the future necessarily. So, and in my opinion, by adding on the extra apparatus bays now, you know, then we don't have to worry about, okay, in ten years, we gotta build the apparatus bays, and now we also have to extend the roof. And then we have to do the concrete, and then we gotta do the epoxy. So it's, it, it just seems to fiscally make more sense to just do it now while we're building and not to add it on in ten, fifteen years.
I agree.
Fair, I mean, I, I think that's a fa- fair point.
Um, I agree with you, Liz. I think that it's important to do it now, and borrowing money is really cheap right now, so it really doesn't change the tax impact that much as it would in five or ten years, even if we have a bigger base. I think it's gonna cost a lot more than we think it's gonna cost.
And also with it being a newer building, um, you know, and they, they talked to us about how, you know, tornado resistant it is. You know, I can see this building being kind of like a hub for residents. You know, if and when there is an emergency, if there's a crisis, or if there needs to be, um, uh, any, any shelter or anything like that, having those extra apparatus bays would be a helpful, helpful tool to help meet the me- needs of the citizens of this community if and when that time were to come.
Um, and I think also Ridge View was interested in having a space, if there was a space to use it, and that's a huge benefit to the, the city. They'd be able to handle a lot of medical calls as well. Um, uh, and not involve necessarily the fire department every time, which, you know, there is a monetary value to that, even though they may not pay to keep their rig there, we may have faster response times for our residents.
Yeah, I, I see those points. I just don't, you know, I, we're betting a lot of money, we're betting money on what maybe might happen, and Ridge View might come here and boy, from where are they gonna pull their one from New Germany? What's, uh, uh, I'm sure New Germany won't be happy with that. And Ridge View places them where they need to place them, not based on what we want, uh, is my understanding, but, um, I, I, and one other thing to, to Nikki's point, um, I disagree a little bit on is this, you know, having this extra tax base down the road if it's needed. And again, this is if it's needed, um, to expand. I think it would be there. Um, you know, and talking about the tax base isn't changing right now, and that, I, well, I think that's true. I think that's true for next year, but we got twenty years of this. The tax base is gonna change within this twenty years and more debt, and my biggest concern is this debt ratio that we're taking on. I'm not concerned with the tax ba- racial next year, but it's five years from now, ten years from now, when we don't know what's happening and we just, uh, approve, we're, we're just gonna be working on one point five million dollar street project that we gotta bond for and other things, and expand the wastewater treatment plant and, you know, so I just disagree, um, from some of that. I, I realize the tax base, or, or, or rates are staying the same for twenty twenty-one, but not for the next nineteen years, it's not. And, and I just don't think we're setting up councils right by spending so much and a lot on these alternates. And like I said, the building as is, what we've just approved is a great, beautiful building, and it's gonna meet all our needs for many, many years, um, so. Some more of my thought, any, any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the additional apparatus bays for a hundred and sixty-five thousand and sixty-nine dollars. Voter.
No.
Steven McPadden.
Aye.
McNeely.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Dodge is a nay. Motion carries three to two. Alright. Alright, that will take us to the hot, uh, hot water and floor heating in the concrete uh, floor in the bays. And we might as well do the alternate bay as, should we do them both together now that we've approved the alternate bays?
Yeah.
Alright, any, any background, Maggie, you need to give on that?
I'm sorry, I was muted.
This is when you're gonna get some ex- extra information for, correct?
Yeah, I think, um, what the council had asked for is more kind of a return on investment. Um, I am definitely not an expert on in-floor heating, um, so I believe this question was, um, given to the architect, and the architect did provide some information that stated, states that the in-floor heat would save between five hundred and fifteen hundred per year. states that the in-floor heat would save between five hundred and fifteen hundred per year over water heaters. Um, and then um kind of an expla- explanation as to why um there would be cost savings, um, and then other benefits, including safety, so it would evaporate, evaporate moisture from the floor quicker, um preventing slips and falls, and then um thermal mass, so once the floor is heated, it radiates heat in a very defined rate. I don't know how mu- if you have questions, I know, um, I believe the architect is on the, on the call as well. Again, I'm not an expert, but it, it, his explanation was five hundred to fifteen hundred per year versus the unit heaters. Um, we would have, I think, a couple of unit heaters still hanging, but um.
So if we take, if we take midway at about a thousand dollars a year, we're looking at every sixty-three year return on our investment?
Uh, yeah, that would, yeah.
Thank you. Any questions for Maggie or uh the chief or the uh engineer on these, or the architect, I'm sorry? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve alternate four and five, adding hot water in-floor heating in the concrete floor in the bays, including the alternate bays for, oh gosh, um, hold on, let me, or sixty-six thousand. Maggie, can you do that math real quick? Can you add, do you have them added together?
Oh, I don't have.
You have them together?
Sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Six seven, six hundred and thirty-eight?
Yep, sixty-seven.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, I'll look for a motion to approve the in-floor heating, uh, the concrete floor in the bays, including the alternate bays for a total of sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
I'll make that motion. Go ahead, Nick.
Oh, Nikki McNeely, I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Stevie McPadden, I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? And for me, again, uh, just to explain, my no vote will be um the return on investment, really. I mean, when we're looking at sixty-some years, I, I understand some of the benefits to it. Again, and some of these things are just things we need to get on to try to keep this number as low as possible um for all our residents um in the community and, and um, you know, and there are some who are even opposed to the entire project itself, so uh, you know, keeping that in mind, but um, that's, that's where I stand on it. Any further discussion? All right, we have a motion, a second. Voter.
No.
Steven McPadden.
Aye.
McNeely.
Aye.
Butterfield.
No.
And Dodges a nay. Motion fails three, two. All right, um. Maggie, that takes us then to priority three, which is alternate three, add carpet and epoxy flooring to the uh, A- Andy, what are those there? The, is it the meeting room? What, where's the carpet and epoxy flooring for alternate three? For fifteen thousand?
The carpet would be the meeting room and the offices, and the epoxy would be in the hallways.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, Maggie, anything you need to add on that one?
Um, Andy, is this including, oh, well, I know you're pre- okay, so we're just voting on the add epoxy and carpet, right? Just for that area?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Correct.
I don't have anything else to add on that.
All right, any questions?
So if they don't do the carpet and the epoxy in the hallways, what's going to be there? Is that just going to be concrete?
It'll be sealed concrete.
More or less, yeah, bare concrete with a clear sealer on it.
Any other questions?
I just, so I'm just going to make a comment here. I, I mean, we're, we're going to have to vote, make a motion a second on this anyway, but I'm actually going to probably reject this one because I feel like we need to bundle this together as a whole project for the epoxy of the whole thing. I, I just don't think it makes sense to like have this company piecemeal this, just this little part, and then later on have to have somebody come in and do the second one if, or the second half of it, if that's what we. I just wish we could have gotten a, a quote on this or a bid on the whole thing instead of just this portion. I'm not sure why we did it that way, but we did, and I'm just explaining myself and my thought process before we go forward here.
Yeah, I agree with you. I, it just seems odd that this wouldn't have been part of just the base bid to have floor, floor coverings. I don't quite understand that.
Yeah.
And at this point, it has been bid out, it has been bid out by our bidder who we've approved as an alternate, so um uh, you know, to your point, we'll, we'll see if we get a motion and, and we'll go from there. It is an alternate that's been bid. Um, Maggie, if this is something that is rejected and is a no, is there any concerns then? And, and let's say the, the epoxy passes in the bay areas. Can then we go back and have these people who bid the bay bid this one, or is that kind of an unethical thing we should not be?
Yeah, you can't.
We shouldn't be doing that, correct? Yeah, I, I, that seems to make sense to me. All right, any other questions? And I'll look for a motion to add carpet and epoxy flooring uh to the meeting rooms and the hallways for fifteen thousand, sixty-nine dollars.
I'll make that motion, Nikki McNeely.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second it. We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
Is there any way that this bid could be brought down? I just feel like this should have been included in the um, in the, the price of the building, and I have a hard time not putting carpet in, you know, in the office areas, but just, it just seems like this is something that should have came part of the base bid. Are we sure this is what it's going to cost?
Yeah, this is the um carpet and epoxy flooring that was bid with the project. The uh, the bays are what was done, uh quoted separately for, so that this.
On that was not part of the bid.
Right, so this section that you're voting on was part of the bid.
Maggie, may I, may I comment?
Who is this?
This is Jeff.
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah.
Jeff.
Well, I just wanted to mention that with the alternate for the add carpet and epoxy flooring, that gives us a square footage cost, a general square footage cost for that epoxy. So if we wanted to reach out to that contractor and ask them what it would cost to do the apparatus base, we would be able to compare that to their base square footage cost.
Do you have that, do you have that number, Jeff? What's the base square footage cost?
I, I do not have that number, but, but that would be something that's in their schedule of values.
Yeah, and I think it's too bad they're lumped together, because I, I definitely think we need carpeting in the meeting room. I could argue the epoxy flooring, but if. Any further discussion?
So we plan to then build a building with offices and meeting spaces without carpet then? Is that the case?
Um, Jeff, I have a question. Is there any way they can approve just the carpeted section?
It's, you can always, this is Tom here with Brunton. I mean, you can always do it. We can have them do a change order, not accept this bid. We can do a change order to add in carpet for the offices in the meeting room. We can, we can compare what we've seen in the past and what's fair with, with carpet at that point. That would have to be after the contract is, uh, well, it could be during the negotiations of the contract to the contractor.
Would.
It's not to say, it's not to say, what I just, what I'm trying to get the point across is not to say if you reject this, it doesn't mean you can't put carpet into the project later.
Yeah, but would that fall under contingencies then, or what, where would that fall?
That, that, yep, that's, it would, it'd need to come from your contingency.
Okay, I just want to be transparent, like, so everybody knows where that would come from, so.
So I guess my question was, is one, we are, we designed a building with offices and meeting rooms without carpet then, correct?
Um, let me explain a little bit here. So um, you know, the project being that it was on a budget constraint, um, I just want to remind everybody that would, that's one small piece of the puzzle here, one small piece of the pie, so that we could see where the numbers come in to at least get a, a base bid to be approved. And these are kind of the things that we talked about in the, in the meetings early on, uh, that we would try to uh separate out so that we could see.
Okay, I, I got you, okay. So it was, so it was in that, we'll, we'll do, we'll get rid of carpet to do something else. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
It's really just, like I said, it's one piece of the puzzle. It's the same thing with the, you know, the kitchen cabinets. Why didn't we, why didn't we put them in? Well, again, it was a budget consideration, and keep in mind, we had seven alternates. That is about the max you want on a project. Are you going to get bidders to get confused, or they're not going to bid on it? So I just want to elaborate on that, so, thank you.
And there's eighty thousand in that contingency line?
Uh, well, currently, that's at the base bid, so it would go up a little bit with every alternate that we approve, up to, I think, I, I think it was, we were thinking it would be between eighty and ninety, depending on where we, ninety if we approved all alternates, and then eighty if we just approved the base bid.
And, and Andy, remind me, is this carpet just for the meeting room, or did you say it includes uh the offices also?
It did include the offices as well.
Yeah, let me, let me clarify again. So this alternate is to put carpet in the, the three offices, the meeting room, which is currently sealed concrete, um, because discussions were said that we could get by with sealed concrete, so let's go that route, and then it also includes adding epoxy to the storage room and the kitchen, so kitchen and storage room, and the main corridor throughout, that, that's in between there. So that, that includes that whole chunk there. Now, another option would be that you could approve this, and then we could also do a deduct change order to pull out epoxy flooring, if we didn't want to do epoxy flooring in the corridors. There's, there's that option too, so.
Okay, but I, I certainly feel we should have carpet in the meeting room and the um offices. As far as sealed or epoxy for the other stuff, I, I, I would just pull that personally, but. Um, all right, but any further questions? We do have a motion and a second to add carpet and the epoxy flooring for fifteen thousand and sixty-nine dollars. Um, we can take a vote on that. If it passes, great. If it fails, we can look at a separate motion. So with that, voter?
No.
Steven McPadden.
Nay.
McNeely.
Yes.
Butterfield.
Nay.
And Dodges a nay. Motion fails four, one. If we want to stay on that item and we want to make some sort of alternate um bid, I would entertain that.
So Stevie McPadden, I'll move to carpet the offices and the meeting area. Um, and I guess, would it be just to ask the uh, the contractor to do a deduct bid to take the epoxy out?
All right, we have a motion to add carpet to the meeting room and the three offices and request for the uh builder to deduct for the epoxy flooring.
I'll second. This is Butterfield.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Voter.
No.
Steven McPadden.
Aye.
McNeely.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Dodges an aye. Motion passes four, one. Um, we don't know that exact number, maybe, so maybe use, uh, yeah, use the whole number for now. Okay. One second here, I'm sorry. Tom, just um, you know, for this number here, so we can kind of keep track of the entire project. Would you say it's, the carpet's maybe ten thousand versus five thousand for epoxy, or is there a closer number we can get that you think might um just for the carpet, or should we just, uh, we can leave it at fifteen thousand for now, I guess? Sorry, okay, let's move to the.
Give us a little bit of time, I can maybe answer that question towards the end of this. Actually, I'll, I'll work on some footage numbers.
Perfect, thank you. All right, epoxy floor option, bay and extra bays. This was an addition uh that came after. This was not an alternate that was bid on. This was a last minute addition. Um. So with that, will Maggie, anything to add to this?
Uh, no, you, you said it all.
Do you have this bid?
All right.
Can we see the bid?
Um, let me see if I have it on this computer. I'm pretty sure I sent it to you all by email, but let me double check. One second.
And, Andy, while she's checking, what are your um, I, I assume, because this has nothing to do with the uh construction bid, we could get another uh bidder too? Is that, is that true?
Yep, and I think that's, I mean, how we would typically do this type of thing is get three bids or whatever on that um, you know, on that, that flooring. I just uh got a local bid here from um someone in town, uh, you know, to give us kind of a budgetary number on that, but, you know, yes, I'm sure we can get, you know, three bids for that.
Okay, well, like, one concern I have with this is how good are these bids? You know, what, at what point are we going to be ready to start epoxying floors? Are we talking September of next year? I, his, I mean, will he honor the bid, or will they honor them? That might be something we're going to need to figure out, or um, you know, we count for some extra for that, but I don't know, I, I don't recall how long his bid was good for. It was thirty days, sixty days, ninety days?
Yeah, um, I can comment on that a little bit. So the, the epoxy flooring would definitely be at the end of the project, like, very close to the end, um, after you get everything else done in there, so they can run through and do their work and kind of back their way out of it, and then um, so which is um, you know, which is going to be several months. So you'd, you just want to make sure that when you get, when we get bids, that we just tell them the timeframe as to when it's going to be installed, and then they, they should honor that bid. Um, the other option to keep in mind that we can also ask the low con- low uh general contractor to reach out to, once he gets his low uh epoxy flooring bidder on board, because keep in mind, we do have some epoxy in the base bid for the bathrooms that's in there, so he's going to have a vendor that he's contracting anyways, and we can have them give us a price for doing the apparatus bay. And it may or may not be, you know, competitive, and you can also go out and, and get your own three bids at that time too. So I think there's some options to really um be transparent in keeping the costs down, so.
Good, okay, thank you.
And Mike, just a comment, um, in, in speaking with Randy on his bid, I mean, he, he knows. And Mike, just a comment, um, in, in speaking with Randy on his bid, I mean, he, he knows and understands that the station isn't built yet, and that it's gonna be. You know, coming up, so he knows on the timeframe, so, yes, I feel he's gonna be, you know. Okay with that and stuff like that, cuz, you know, he knew, he knows when, you know, when that timeframe would be.
Perfect, good.
I think, um, if we are doing this separate, I just want you to be aware that, yeah, we would have to get. Probably, I think we have to get three quotes, no matter what, so, just keep that in mind. Uh, but here's, here's the.
And when we do those three quotes, or additional quotes, um, let's just make it clear to whoever's quoting it, that yes, this won't be until next, you know, next fall, just so they're all aware of it.
Right.
Alright, any other questions on that?
Is his bid here, are these numbers for the entire? Station, the two bays, plus the rest? That's what I'm looking at.
Yep, it's everything, um.
Have a roundabout number. For everything.
I think this is everything in the bays only, so the eight bays.
Wasn't in the other additional two, let's add room one thirteen, one fourteen, one sixteen. And something tower. What's that?
So that is like where the gear, our gear lockers are, uh, you know, where, you know, gears, so it's kinda in the bays, but it's. Pointed out on the plan as separate rooms, so that's why it's listed the way it is. It's all connected there, that's like, but it's where, um, you know, where our gear lockers are, um, uh. The SCBA room, um, and stuff like that, so that's kinda all connected with the base, um, so that, well, that way.
Right now, that's just, um, being bid as sealed concrete.
Yes, correct.
And with sealed concrete, or whatever, can't you make it like a rough finish, so it isn't slippery? No.
Hmm, uh, yes, it's, it is just, um, um, concrete that's steel trolled, like you would see, you know. Similar to, um, well, I shouldn't say a sidewalk, a sidewalk could be broomed, but. Um, it, it's still gonna have texture to it like concrete, and then the, the sealer is just applied over that and rolled on. Just really, the sealer, all it does is just to help keep additional moisture. Out of the concrete, and it helps harden the surface of the concrete. So.
So it's not much, it's. It's not much different than a basement or a residential garage, correct? I mean, it's.
Yeah, probably similar to a residential garage would be a good comparison.
And do people slip now in the current station?
In the current station, we do have an epoxied floor.
Oh, in the bays?
Yep.
Um, we compare it to a, to a residential garage, I've, I've never slipped in my garage.
Well, yeah, I would just like to, you know, if, like I said, we have the epoxy floor in the station right now, it's, you know, got kind of a sand grit. And, you know, I think, especially now that we don't have the, the in-floor heat to kinda help dry things out. I, I think it is, it's safety-wise, very beneficial to put that epoxied floor in.
That's a good point.
Alright, thank you, alright, any, any other, uh, questions? Maybe if you can go back here, uh, I'll look for a motion then to approve. Epoxy flooring. In the bays, including the extra bays. Uh, and the gear area that was mentioned in that one quote. Um, with additional quotes provided not to exceed forty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty cents. Meaning that Randy's could be the highest bid, or could be the lowest bid.
Stevie McPadden, I will make that bid, or that motion.
Okay. Come here.
Alright, we have a mo, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Nikki McNeely, I'll second that.
What?
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Well, hopefully, uh, I'm hoping we can get some real competitive bids on this. Um, and my thoughts would be, perhaps if it comes in much lower than the forty-one thousand, we might be able to roll in the, um. The other areas we just discussed, is, is what I'm hoping, so maybe reaching out. You know, to the, you know, with Tom, whoever bid this, and, and trying to, you know, initially trying to have them bid the whole project, it, it, it might be worthwhile, so. It might work out, we could get everything done, uh, by the numbers, but, um, any further discussion? So we do have a motion and a second to. Perhaps acquire additional bids to do the epoxy flooring in the. Bay apparatus area, including the two extra bays, and the gear area, um, that was in our discussion. Not to exceed forty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty cents. With that, voter? Stevie McPadden?
Aye.
McNeely?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
And Dodge is an aye, motion carries four zero, or four one, I'm sorry. Next, next one on the list. So I, I'll let you type up, Maggie.
I, the, um, getting back to everybody about the cost to just do carpet. The, the budget there, I think we would be safe with ten thousand dollars allocated for carpet for the meeting room and for the offices.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes.
Alright, the next item on the list. Is a generator. Um. I don't know if anyone's had a chance to look at this, this is an addition, this was not discussed at our last workshop meeting, I'm. I don't know what to say about this, I, I just don't have the information I'm gonna need, but, um. We do have a bid, uh, that we acquired today from one person, again, that's gonna have to go out for three bids, um, I'm assuming for this amount of money. Um, I. For me, it's hard to discuss this, we can either table this one, or I, we can look for a motion to approve a generator not to exceed forty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars. On you on me, Eric.
This is Butterfield, um. Not knowing what kinda generator, what kinda wattage, what kinda amp, what, what kind of fuel system, um, I don't feel comfortable. Voting on this, not knowing the, those specifics, and then also, um, kinda to reiterate what, uh. Eric had said earlier about another alternate, it's hard for me to sit there and think that we would build a fire department without having this being part of the base. This should've been part of the base bid.
Alright, Liz, would you like to make a motion?
Can I comment on that first? Um.
You muted yourself.
Uh, as far as the, um, the size of the generator, um, was a hundred and fifty thousand watt. Um, is the, yeah, as far as the fuel, I think it would be natural gas. Secondly, the reason so a lot of this stuff got pulled out is because, um, the budget that we were kinda given. Um, to, to do this station, we knew that, um, we were not able to get. Get everything, or, you know, get what we needed for that two point eight. Um, million, from, from the numbers that Brunton provided us. Um, you know, what we were all looking at was never gonna fall underneath that two point eight. So there was items that we decided to, um, pull off of there, so we could get that base underneath that two point eight. With the, you know, the thoughts of either getting this, um, after the fact or stuff like that. There was stuff that we couldn't cut from it to get down any lower, we couldn't cut any more square footage, we, we cut as much as we could to still. Um, you know, uh, to still meet all our needs, um, so these were some of those items that we had to pull off. Um, just to be able to try and get that number under that two point eight, and with the, the thoughts of then getting this. Um, you know, after the fact by budgeting for it, or whatever the case may be. Um, you know, I, I, yes, I agree with you totally, these, these things should've been all put onto the, um. Onto the base bid, but I knew we were never gonna get the, you know, that number, and that's what the number you guys. Gave us, so that is the reason why some of those things were pulled off of there.
Right, no, we understand that, thank you. Um, so some of that too, uh, uh, my comment on that is, you know, we, we have this direction of two point eight, let's get it. Our base construction are two point eight, we knew we couldn't do it, so we cut some things. What is it, now we're adding them all right back in, what's the difference? I mean, we're not sticking with even our two point eight million, I. I specifically asked, uh, last week. Cuz I was, as I was looking at these in different ways, one of my ways to look at this was, well, okay, let's stick with the two point eight, even though I disagreed with that number. What would you guys add in to get us up to the two point, and keep us under the two point eight, which of these items? And you refused to send me a response. You blatantly said, no, I'm not, I'm not gonna tell you that, so it, it's hard for me to work through some of that stuff, but. Um, just my thought, and, and again, Liz, if you wanna make a motion, you certainly can.
I will make a motion to table the generator at this time.
We, we have a motion to table the generator at this time, do we have a second?
Stevie McPadden, I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, to table the generator at this time, any further discussion?
The emergency manager in me just tells me that this building cannot not have a generator now. This is one of those things where, during that thought process of, you know, what do we need and not need in the fire station? Would've been, this should've been high on that priority level, um, I think that this is something that needs to, needs to be added now and get in the process.
And I, this is Liz, and I don't disagree with you, Eric, um, but to me, this should've been one of those non-negotiables, this should've been in the construction bid. To me, these alternates are, are more of wants and not needs, the need should've been in that construction bid, and a fire department needs a generator.
I agree, stole the words right out of my mouth, I completely agree about the process.
Um. Yeah, and I also agree, I, uh, hold on, hold on a second, uh, please, um, I agree also. That we need it, I'm all for the generator, I'm hoping we can, uh, prepare for one, get the electricity, get the, or, or, or the gas line, whatever's needed to prepare for this. I think we'll have some discussions down the road on this, um, we can go out on our own, since this is not part of the, the, the bid. Um, but as far as I'm concerned, we absolutely, it's, it's a must for me too, I, I don't know why we wouldn't do it. I just can't vote on something that, we got the email literally at four thirty, I haven't read through it, I haven't looked, it, it's the same thing, I can't. I, I, it's a disservice to the residents and the community to, for me to make a decision on this, I will make it, and I think we'll get there, but for right now, that's where we're at. Any further discussion? Voter? And we have a motion to, and a second to table the generator.
No.
Stevie McPadden?
Aye.
McNeely?
Nay, I just think we should do it now.
Butterfield?
Aye.
And Dodge is an aye, motion passes three two. Alright. That will take us to priority five, alternate two, change roof. To the sixty mil un-reinforced fully adhered EPDM roof. Any questions, any council needs on that, we had a, uh, quite a bit of this. Excuse me, discussion wrapped around that at the, at the work session last Monday. Any questions that came up, or rows that you need answers to?
But just to clarify, is this the one that has the rocks on the roof?
This is the one that does not, we currently have the rocks, this is an upgrade of thirty-six thousand, six hundred dollars to. Go with the, the non-rock roof.
Yeah, fully adhered roof.
Fully adhered.
Thank you.
Yeah. Alright, if no questions, I'll look for a motion to approve priority five, alternate two, to change the roof to a sixty mil. Fully adhered EPDM roof for thirty-six thousand and sixty-nine dollars.
Nikki McNeely, I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Stevie McPadden, I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
Uh, my only thing is, um, this should be done at time of construction, that's why I would vote for it now. I think if we tried to change the structure later, it'd be a lot more money. And I think that it would be a good resource for training purposes, to be able to have the ability to. Do more trainings by using the roof and not worrying about, uh, wrecking the roof's system that's on there.
Any other comments? So I've struggled a little bit with this one, um, Nikki, I see your point, and I know, I know they've discussed. You know, some last minute, maybe we could use this for repelling, or, or training for that, I, I struggle with how much. Repelling and training do we do, you know, how much training do we do for repelling? I, unless I'm missing something, it seems more that's a. If you lived in bluffs or, or cliffs and you're repelling, I, I don't know why we would be doing that. Andy, is there, are you guys currently doing repellent training, or do you need a certified repellent to do these train, or, or how is it? How does that happen?
Um, no, we do not do any repelling right now, it's, it's not only the, you know, a repelling thing, it's more, um. If we, we ladder the roof, um, climb up onto a roof and stuff like that, because we do have commercial strategy in this, you know, um. City that we would be, you know, throwing a ladder on, um, you know, up against to go on to the roof and stuff like that. Now we can train that, so, um, do we do repelling right now? No, I don't, but it's, do we, are we gonna use it to, um. Climb up onto this roof, you know, from laddering it and going up onto it? Yes, I would like to be able to do that.
What do you currently use?
As far as.
Laddering up your roof?
Um, well, we've have used our current fire station, we've, you know. Thrown ladder up against that, and then we've gone up on the roof, we've used the city community center, and have, have done it there. Um, or if we, you know, get a, a structure that, you know, is to be burned down, or whatever, that they let us. You know, we, we've, we've tried using that, but, um, you know, it'd be nice having that, um, you know, abilities to, um. You know, train right at our station.
Alright, thank you.
So if, if you don't have the adhered roof, are you saying that you cannot train on the roof at all?
No, I am not saying that, we can still do it, um, it's just the, the fact that it does, uh, that he brought up the fact, the architect brought, brought the fact that. It, um, you know, with added, uh, walking and whatever, you can potentially damage that roof, would be a potential.
And is the, the roof with the rocks, is that guaranteed for a certain amount of years?
Tom, can you answer that?
I think you're both guaranteed the same amount, didn't you last meeting?
That's what I thought, but I'm making sure.
Alright, any other?
It would both be a twenty-year warranty, yes.
Janelle? Do we have a, a, a motion and a second on this one or?
Not yet.
Yeah, we have Nikki made the motion and Ty seconded it.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, any further discussion?
It's getting to be a long day.
All right, we have a motion and a second to change the roof to the sixty mil unreinforced fully adhered EPDM roof for thirty six thousand, sixty nine dollars. Voter.
No.
Stevie McPadden.
I'm a nay.
McNeely.
Yes.
Butterfield.
No.
And Dodges a no. Motion fails four, one. All right, that'll take us to alternate six. Sorry Maggie, I'll give you a second there. All right, alternate six, add labor and materials for all upper kitchen cabinets for three thousand, sixty nine dollars. Any questions, any further questions with that? If not, I'll look for a motion to add the labor and materials for all upper kitchen cabinets.
Nikki McNeely, I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it. Stevie McPadden.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
This is Butterfield and I was just thinking with, with all the wonderful handy people on the fire department that somebody can make them and a bunch of guys can put them up there. But, you know, to have it formally come out of a budget, I'm not comfortable with.
All right, any further discussion? And again, for me, I, 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 I know it's a small amount there, but I think the chief made a good point about them matching and if we don't do them now. But um, I think they're uh, neutral enough that we should, we should be able to match them up, uh, I'm hoping. Um, when we're ready to do them, so. Any further discussion? All right, we have a motion, a second to add the labor and materials for all upper kitchen cabinets for three thousand, sixty nine dollars. Voter. Stevie McPadden.
I'm a nay.
McNeely.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Nay.
And Dodges a nay. Motion fails four, one. That'll take us to alternate seven and the recommendation is to exclude alternate seven from the bid. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
McNeely and McPadden, uh, for motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Voter.
Aye.
Stevie McPadden.
Aye.
McNeely.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
And Dodge is a nay. Motion carries five, zero.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I say this is Tom here. I missed it. You said motion to not include it. Is that correct? Or a vote to not include it, is that correct?
Yeah, it was to, yeah, it was to exclude.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything we can do for pre-wiring or, you know, running gas lines for that generator that we need to be thinking of now to maybe save some costs in the future?
All right, I think we, Tom, we already did that, right?
We already have provisions in the plan. Um, and I'll just briefly run through those. The provisions there to accept the generator. We'll open the plan here. So we have, we have uh, some pole boxes and conduit, a pole box set on the outside of the building. We have a conduit for future running out to the place of the generator. So there, there are things, um, equipment there set up. Now, what's not included would be the generator, the concrete pad that it sits on and the automatic transfer switch and the labor to install a generator. So there are, like I said, there are things there. Um, I guess if you wanna know specifics, there's a, let's see, a NEMA three R pole box for future six hundred amp ATS location on the outside. Um, and it has a main fusible disconnect switch next to it for the generator.
This is, as long as we're to the point where one, the generator is available or made available, we can get it in.
Yeah, we, we have that covered. I can say that.
Awesome, thank you.
Good. All right, that goes through all our items. We have approved the bid, all the alternates. We have a total for the entire fire station at three million, five hundred seventy thousand, eight hundred twelve dollars and eight cents, uh, excluding the generator, uh, which we know, uh, will be adding later, which will put us over three point six million. So with that, thank you. Um, thank you, everyone. Thanks to the committee, all the firefighters. Um, certainly, uh, uh, Chief One, Chief Two, I appreciate all your time. Um, I know you put in more than most. Um, and, and council, Brunton and Associates, I, I appreciate all the work and um, we look forward to moving into the new station.
Can I make a few comments?
Sure.
Um, first of all, I wanna thank, um, thank council, mayor, um, you know, for approving, uh, approving this station and stuff. Um, it's, you know, desperately needed. Um, you know, and I appreciate all your guys' work on this and stuff like that to get this done. Um, so thank you for that, um, you know, from, from me and, you know, from the rest of the fire department. Secondly, um, I just have a comment or a thought. Um, if, if the fire department, um, members of the relief association, um, you know, felt very strongly about this in-floor heating in the bays and stuff like that and would like to fund that um, from our funds, would that be something that would be possible?
Uh, we, we, we could certainly take to a workshop and discuss it.
Um, yeah, I can, ooh, that, that's tricky. I'm, I don't know if Tom would know the answer because we need to approve a contract with all alternate, all approved alternates in it, right, Tom? And the only concern I have is if we don't include that. I mean, we have to start working on a contract and we would need to know tonight.
Maggie, why don't, why don't you reach out with, with Tom tomorrow or touch base with Tom or who we need to?
Okay.
And then you can get, you can get Andy an answer.
Okay, yeah, um.
But you make a good point. We do have to get this contract going now and how do we have a subcontractor working with the contractors now who weren't part of it and we've already excluded them from the bid and now we're doing it on our own.
Well, you'd be a center.
I'm not saying that they would not do it. It's just that, um, you know, the relief association would possibly fund that instead of the city funding it.
Do you know for sure, like?
I don't know that for sure without talking with all the, um, with all the members. Um, but in getting some text messages from some people after it got voted down of being able to look into that option, um, I would, I would like to just explore that.
Yep, it's a good idea. Go ahead and explore it, Maggie. Why don't you work with Andy or, and whoever you need to and, and explore it, see if it's feasible.
Can I just ask Tom, um, Tom, do you know, um, I mean, cause we're gonna have, we wanna bring a contract to the next meeting. Um, I mean, how does that, how is that gonna work? Like if we don't have that alternative approved.
Can you take it offline tomorrow with Tom, Maggie? I mean, we're, we're not gonna have a contract tomorrow. Why don't you take it offline with Tom tomorrow and then follow back with Andy?
We, we can do that, Maggie. I do think you're, I agree with you though. It's gonna be difficult to move forward with a contract. Um, so we can talk about it tomorrow.
Yeah, I just don't know if this contract is gonna be ready by December twenty eighth then. Is what I'm, is what I'm getting at.
We can discuss it tomorrow.
Okay, sounds good.
Perfect, thank you. All right, thank you, everyone. Thanks again. Andy, is anything else you wanna add?
No, I guess, um, yeah, just thank you again.
All right, yeah, thank you.
Thank you from Brunton Architects. We appreciate it and thank you that you guys put your trust in us on this project. So we're ready to get started with making the changes, adding the base to the drawings and getting the contract going, so.
Perfect, great. I appreciate it, Tom. Thanks for all your work.
We're, we're gonna cut off for the night unless anybody needs us.
Oh, feel free. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good night.
Yeah, you too.
Yep, bye. Merry Christmas too, bye.
All right, Maggie, let's, um, move on to four C one, public works department.
Okay, sorry, I just have to get back to where I was. Okay, um, all right, so last meeting on December fourteenth, um, council approved a range, um, with which to negotiate, um, or to bring to the union to negotiate. Um, it would also be keeping that five thousand dollars separate. Um, so what we did is we were, we staff reached out to the union with a propos, with a proposed memorandum, memorandum of understanding. That's a document that will be, um, now attached to the union agreement. Um, if council approves it, so we did, uh, they did approve that range. Um, and then with the, uh, um, so they approved that range for twenty twenty, twenty twenty and then the three percent increase for twenty twenty one. Um, so that was approved and so the next step is, uh, to consider off, uh, tonight to offer the public works worker one a promotion and add a specific wage amount that would be effective January first, twenty twenty one. So what we would do then, if you do agree with that and make a recommendation or a motion, we would then bring that to the union, um, to, for further discussion. And if approved at the union, then we can, um, approve and accept that promotion and final wage determination at the December twenty eighth meeting. So with that, I'm open for.
So even if we, even if we promote someone, they can't, they can't accept it themselves, it still has to go through the union?
Um, it would go through the way, because it's a wage, the wage, um, determination. We do work with the union on that. We, we make the offer. We don't negotiate. We just make an offer of promotion and wait, a wage for.
Okay. Okay, so we've added it in the range into the contract with this MOU. Uh, and, and they approve it. So let's, let's first start then and, and look for a motion to approve the mayor's signature on the, uh, union agreement, MOU, uh, which is accepting the range for this lead position.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
This is Butterfield, I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Voter.
Aye.
Stevie McPadden.
Aye.
McNeely.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
And Dodge is an aye. Motion carries five, zero. Okay, then, well, we got the range set. We know where, um, public works, um, one would, would be starting January first.
It would be the lead position. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, yep, I understand the lead, but public works one, uh, would have been at, uh, where is it here? What was his range? What was his, twenty seven eighty three? Twenty seven eighty three would be the salary of public works, public works worker one on Jan, January first without the promotion. So, um, I'll look for a motion. Do we wanna discuss a range or, or an amount first or? An emotion? I, I, I can tell you kinda what the personnel committee was thinking, you know, per our discussions, Maggie, is that, is that?
Yeah, no, that's good.
Approach this.
Yeah, that'd be good, just to go over what personnel talked about. Um, just, just to include in the, any motion you make, just, um, offering it as a promotion to the lead position as well.
Right, right. So, and, and personnel committee talked about this, um, quite a bit and we were right in, doing the math, doing the extra responsibilities. Uh, we were thinking it was about a two dollar, uh, an hour, uh, increase for the, for the lead position with the extra responsibilities. Um, so we were thinking somewhere near, you know, two bucks, you know, so twenty nine eighty three, you know, uh, right, right around there, right around the thirty dollars kind of was our thoughts on it, so. I don't know if anyone has any questions for the personnel committee.
And that, that is, does not include the five thousand dollars for the.
That is correct. Yeah.
They would still, they get the two dollar raise plus the, still the five thousand for the wastewater.
Correct, correct, because we left, we left that in the, uh, lead role as a, as a temporary assignment, you know, so. I guess with that, you know, I, I'll look for a motion to promote public workers one to, uh, to the new lead position uh, with the assumption that he will still be assigned the utility lead role for five thousand dollars per year for a specific salary range that someone would like to make a motion for.
Well, I'm confused. I'll, I'd like to make a motion, but.
Yeah, yeah, I, I worded, I, I got wordy on that and I, I didn't wanna set the, the number, look for a motion of make a number. So I'm looking for someone to kinda make a motion to what salary, uh, would be appropriate to promote public works one to the lead position.
This is Butterfield. I'll make a motion, um, for the promotion to, uh, public workers lead position. Uh, and then with the additional five thousand dollars for the, uh, wastewater and the water treatment.
Yeah.
And an hourly rate, wait, sorry, an hourly wage of thirty one dollars an hour.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So for the union, this didn't have to be advertised. We don't have to go through any of the other steps that we just.
Um, yeah, it doesn't have to because it's a position within the union now. And so you can just offer a promotion within the union.
And because it's a promotion, it doesn't affect any of the other wages that the other union workers are getting.
Um, correct. Well, can you clarify maybe a little bit more?
So we're doing this, that doesn't necessarily mean that we have to also answer in kind for the other two. Um, the same type of raises or, or percentages or?
Yeah, yeah, I, if I, without, yeah, there's.
No, the answer is no. We don't, the union's not, the union contract's not set up that if one employee gets a promotion, everyone gets a promotion. I can tell you, I, I can tell you to, that pub, a, a personnel committee work, uh, committee is working on other things, yes.
Yeah.
But it's not mandatory. But yes, we are working on other promotions, yes.
This probably doesn't have anything to do with it, but we always had to watch the equal pay kind of thing.
Oh, pay equity?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're still good there?
Yep, yep, we should be fine.
And that was part of the whole assessment, correct? Maggie, with the pay equity, I mean, that was a portion of it, correct?
Yes, we do pay equity every three years and with the study by David Drones, they, they did a grading and a classification of it. So when we do our next pay equity, it'll be included in that report.
I can tell you, I, I think this is a warranted promotion for our Public Works Worker One. I'm a little concerned that the $31 an hour seems a little, a little high to me at a $3 an hour raise and puts them right up near the top of the, the pay range right away. It's a little more than I wanted to, to be at. I thought two was reasonable for the extra responsibilities.
Range will adjust, though, also each year.
Right, no, I understand that.
Yeah, it, it adjusts, but, I mean, I just, also just a reminder, too, that our, this union contract is up in July of next year. So there will be more negotiations.
Right, yeah, I just don't want to give, I, I want to make it clear, I, I, I'm all for this promotion, absolutely. And it's warranted. Any, any further discussion? With that, we have a motion and a second to promote the Public Works Worker One to the Public Works Lead Position for an hourly wage of $31 an hour effective January 1st, 2021. With the condition that he will still be assigned the utility lead assignment for the amount of $5,000 per year. Voter.
Aye.
Stephen McPadden.
Aye.
McNeely.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
And Dodge is an aye. Motion carries five zero. All right, with that, Maggie, we can move to 4D COVID-19 discussion.
Okay, so I just wanted to just do a little discussion on this. So, sorry, I apologize. I'm just trying to. Okay, I'll know, I just provided a little update on recent executive orders by the Governor of Minnesota. Um, last week, there wasn't, well, in November, there was kind of a, I, I don't, is it kind of a shutdown of a lot of social gathering activities? And just, what? Yeah, so, yeah, it was like a month long that was supposed to go until December 18th, which was last Friday. On the December 16th, he did open things up a little bit or made some minor changes to small, small social gatherings, outdoor gatherings, gyms and fitness studios, and then also some changes to bars and restaurants and breweries. Just kind of giving another timeline. So, as you know, since May, we have been, our response has been to follow the executive orders. We did pass a preparedness plan. We're working on amending it. We've also, we've felt to businesses on several occasions and explained orders and educated and offered support. We also did do a reimbursement of, of like some of the liquor license fees for 2020. And we continue, staff continues to work with Governor Tony CDA. They are expecting additional business grants that are gonna be available coming probably next week. So we're gonna help promote that and we're also gonna write a letter to, to the businesses and put it on social media and through email, just reaching out to as many businesses as we can to take advantage of those situations. I also provided you with some information, a letter that we wrote to Governor Walz in May and then a proclamation. So I was just asked to write an update and then just, I was just asking, gonna ask for any discussion at the council level as far as there's anything else you would like to see as far as a city responds with the latest executive orders that were put in place.
So some, some of this is just a pulse check, where we're at. We know before we sent a proclamation, hey, you know what, let's get things opened up. This is hurting our city. Are we there again? Are we not? As far as I know, no businesses have specifically reached out to us and asked for help and asked us to do that. As far as, I've never been reached out to. I did get reached out by a resident who was concerned. I don't know if anyone else was, but that's what made me just start thinking, you know, should we just have a quick discussion? Do we want to do another memo to the governor? Are we fine with how things are right now? Should we play it out, see what the businesses say once Maggie reaches out to them? Like I said, it's just a post-check where we're at, if there's anything we, we, we should do right now for our businesses.
I think we should fight for them to get reopened.
Absolutely.
Another proclamation letter that we did in May.
Yes, I agree.
I agree also. Maggie, is that a motion then that we would make? We can just make that now and you can, you can write it up instead. You don't have to bring it back next Monday, correct?
Um. Yeah, you can direct staff to write a proclamation, um.
Or do we have to bring it back?
I guess I would feel more comfortable with you approving it at, like, as written instead of.
It'll be next Monday, then. It'll.
Right, it'll be next Monday.
All right, then I think the direction now is let's write a proclamation. That's what seems to be at, and we'll have to re- re- approve it on Monday. Why don't you go ahead and do that, really stress that it's, it's hurting these small communities. We need things open. There has to be some sort of flexibility. You know, a, a painting with this broad brush across the entire state isn't, what's, what's good for Hennepin County isn't necessarily good for McLeod County or Carver County or Beltrami County. And we gotta look at this differently and get some of these businesses open and help them, help them get open.
Agreed.
You know, and I, I think at the end of the year or, or so, maybe not the end of the year, one of these meetings, I think we should be re-looking at their liquor license reimbursement like we did last time. I, I, I understand that's a small amount of money, but if they can't use them. So I think we should keep that in the forefront also. It's just, there should have, there should be more county input on some of these things. And we're even different from Eastern Carver County to Western Carver County. There's a big difference in how things are. And, and we just can't, it's killing us here. So that's just my soapbox.
I know that some of the fees for their liquor license go to their background checks, but how much of, how much of that liquor license are we keeping for administrative fees?
Um, I can get that information to you at the, maybe another meeting when we discuss reimbursement.
And maybe that's what the next council can do going forward is just waive those fees because they've certainly had a hard year, probably.
Now, we can look, so, so far, we've only reimbursed, I think, three, one quarter. That's how they were shut down before. So this will be one more month or two months. So we're looking at, you know, three, four, five months of the reimbursement. So we should have plenty to cover our administrative fees, our background checks, all that. But I'll have Maggie do the math and just make sure it's right. But e- either way, I think it's something we can do. All right, anything more on that?
Yeah, I know, I know you want to wait another week to have us approve the proclamation, but I think Maggie can just basically write the exact same proclamation. Obviously changing the dates and that very last paragraph, you know, leaving that restaurants and bars should open and obviously we need, you know, we don't need to have the word fitness centers, places of worship in there. So I would feel comfortable with the same letter with those changes.
Okay. Yeah, I agree.
And send it on her own? Is, is that a motion?
I, I think we need to send it right away. I agree with Liz. Just make those changes, removing the couple of parts that we don't need to be concerned about because they're open. But we need to help our restaurants and bars.
I don't want to wait one more week. I want to get these people open. I mean, yeah, they can do limited seating outside, but it's winter.
Right. All right, Liz, do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to send another proclamation to the governor with the, the same, the same proclamation that we made before with the execution of places of worship and fitness centers and with the appropriate dates put in there.
Do we have a second?
McNeely, second.
Thank you. We have a motion. Second, any further discussion? Voter.
Aye.
Stephen McPadden.
Aye.
McNeely.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
And Dodge is an aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Look for motion to adjourn.
I'll make.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Again, my only comment to Council, I appreciate all your hard work, all the meetings, all the time spent on this fire station. We're gonna have a great, a great station there for the community. So I thank you all for that. Voter.
Aye.
Stephen McPadden.
Aye.
McNeely. Butterfield.
Aye.
Dodge is an aye. Motion carries five zero. We are adjourned.
Thank you.